The approval of the consent agenda items, does anyone have any extension?
I'm good. I'd like to approve the consent agenda item presented.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, okay. Consent agenda items are approved, we're moving on to new business. I'm going to do a roll call vote to schedule a closed session to discuss student and personnel matters as permitted by revised Missouri statute six ten point twenty one, sections three, thirteen, and fourteen at the conclusion of the open session.
Second.
Melissa? Rich?
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
Lyndon?
Aye.
Dominic?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Uh, we are up to our pirate pride update.
I wanted to share with you, uh, this is our pirate pride time hub where our employees can access on our district website, or anyone else can access it as well. Uh, the information that we utilize to drive the pirate pride initiative that we started this year. Uh, this, this initiative was started in lieu of the students not doing AMI during snow dates because we built in extra time, minutes, everything into our calendar. So the teachers, um, worked with the salary and welfare committee and the administration to come up with ideas on how we could utilize our time as teachers to increase the pirate pride and do things to support our students outside of classroom setting. Um, a lot of really amazing ideas have grown from this. Um, it started with attending, um, plays, concerts, sporting events, and led to, um, just a plethora of, of opportunities. Our teaching staff also, um, explored opportunities to grow and do some professional learning. Many of them have become, um, hooked podcast listeners now um, because they are following, um, some professional educators and growing and learning about that. So we've got a really lot of good feedback from it. At the beginning of the school year, I came to the board and with the previous school year, we had not missed very much school because of the weather. Last year was a pretty good, not very many snow days here. And so I asked the board if we could at least start three days ahead with the staff because there's so much work that the teachers and staff do that go into getting ready for school before that first official day. And so the board agreed that because of all that extra that goes in, we would start kind of banked with three in, three in the basket, three to the credit. So then, um, those three days, we, we had those sitting in the bank for pirate pride and then the weather and the season started in and we started missing some snow. So we started making up, um, and some teachers even got a jump start up. Uh, fall sports, um, saw a, a really neat influx of people in the stands and it was exciting for the students to look up and see their, their fourth grade crew of teachers to come out and watch them play ball and many other things as well. So, so those first three were built in. The next three, the teachers did all those different activities, building up that extra bank time. And then this last three, that takes us up to nine, we went back to the teachers and said, because we've missed a significant amount of instruction, we need to take a little bit of time and really prioritize. Look at your lessons. You're probably going to be a little off track now, so let's prioritize, let's get rid of some fluff. What's that look like? And that took time. So we gave them credit for that time, three days worth of time they could build up, kind of going through resetting priorities, connecting, collaborating with their partners, uh, just kind of realigning curriculum so that we can get everything in that was essential before test time, which is just right around the corner. So that took us to nine. So we have two more days hanging out there because we missed eleven so far. So I'm coming back to the board tonight to see if you all would allow us to give grace for those last two days. We've worked hard, we've established some really great, great habits. We've really supported our students in ways that we haven't in the past. So I asked that the board give us day ten and day eleven with a little bit of, just to bank those. Um, and, and we could still miss school. We still could have reasons that we would not be able to have school. Everybody knock. So, um, I'm just asking for the two and if we miss more, then we will start, start banking time again after that. So if you all will consider that, um, I think the teachers would appreciate it. We've gotten, like I said, a lot of good feedback. I went out into the buildings and sat in the teachers' lounges and, and answered questions. They had a lot of really neat ideas. We said yes to some things that were out of the box. We said no to some things. It's like, hmm, that's something you're always going to be doing. And they're like, well, it's worth trying. So, uh, but I think two more days, uh, they would appreciate it very much if we could give them that. Eleven days in one school year, that's a lot of snow days. I'm just asking if you all would consider doing that and say a little prayer for us that that's all we have.
I'll make a motion to waive those two days from the contract.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Right.
Yep.
We're moving on to, uh, discussion item, the MSBA policy update. Twenty twenty four D, has everybody had a chance to look at that? No, it's... Is there any... Did Stacy, did Stacy have anything that she wanted to?
Um, we just, we looked at the one about the, uh, the teacher placement. But I think with, with teacher recruitment, it would be okay to leave that.
Anybody have any discussions about any of these questions? So next month they will move up to the consent agenda. To be approved, if no one has any other. Okay. Are you okay? Um, moving on to informational items. We have our student council reps here tonight to give us a report on attendance and I believe they have a video as well.
We have slides here, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, we're, I'm just gonna nod my head to you when I need the slide changes. If that's okay.
Yes. Can you intro, can you introduce everybody please? Thank you.
So, uh, hi, we are the student council here at Perryville High School. I'm Katie Broking and I am the president of our organization. And these are all my officers, uh, I guess we'll go down the important slide.
My name is Ava Day, I'm the student council treasurer.
I'm Willan Hoover, I'm the corresponding secretary.
I'm Allison Burns, I'm the recording secretary.
I'm Morgan Hawes and I'm the reporter.
I'm Reese Thurling and I'm the committee leader filling in for students across my classes.
So today we are here presenting key reasons, uh, uh, why students here at our school are missing school beyond illness. We conducted a survey at...
Go ahead and choose the slide.
Maybe. And we, we conducted a survey and four hundred and twenty-three of our students filled it out, which is sixty-seven point nine percent of our whole school population at the high school. Uh, almost seventy percent, which is amazing. Uh, quite a lot of results and I'm quite proud of that. And, uh, we found that at the day that we conducted this, uh, survey, there was forty-seven students that were absent, so not a lot either. So that was pretty good, a lot of response. The data reveals important trends that address could improve attendance and student success.
The leading reason students miss school is for mental health. Anxiety, depression, and overwhelming stress make it difficult for students to attend. Many feel unsupported or lack of coping tools needed to handle their struggles. If students don't feel mentally well, their academic performance and attendance suffer.
The second most common reason students miss school is lack of sleep. Whether due to homework, extracurricular activities, jobs, or poor sleep habits, students are not getting enough rest. Sleep deprivation affects concentration, mood, and overall performance. Schools could help by educating students on healthy sleep habits, encouraging balanced workloads, and even reconsidering start times. Many students miss school as well due to family events, including weddings, funerals, and other obligations. In some cases, parents simply require their children's presence for important matters. But this is a category that sometimes a student is gonna have to miss for, obviously.
The fourth leading reason would be for a permit or driver's test, which would be about seventeen point nine percent or seventy-six students. A notable portion of students miss school for their permit or driver's test as appointments are often scheduled during school hours. While getting a license is an important milestone, it does contribute to absences. This is another thing that is not very avoidable, affordable, just some kids tend to miss school for.
Sixty-six students admitted that they skipped, skipped school simply because they were just bored. This highlights the need for more engaging lessons and hands-on experiences. When students don't feel challenged or interested, they're more likely to disengage. Incorporating real-world applications, student-driven projects, and interactive teaching methods could make school more compelling and encourage better attendance.
Additional reasons why students miss school were vacation. Some families take trips during the school year leading to absences. Transportation issues, lack of transportation makes getting to school difficult for some students. Bullying, some students avoid school because they feel unsafe. Addressing bullying is crucial to improving attendance. Homework and assignments not complete. Some students choose to skip, to face, to avoid facing the consequences of unfinished work and students also miss because of errands. Some students are responsible for running errands for their families, which is taking away from school time. And we had a hundred and another twelve students list other reasons for not missing.
Yeah, beyond the list of reasons, a hundred and twelve students reported missing school for other reasons. Others included, uh, sports commitments, medical appointments, work obligations, hunting, or personal appointments. Overall, this data shows that absenteeism is not a simple issue. Students miss school for mental health reasons, exhaustion, family obligations, logistical challenges. But when approved attendance must address these underlying causes. And also families of students. This isn't just a student issue. It's also a student involving parent, it's also an issue involving parents or parents. By increasing mental health support, promoting healthy sleep habits, and school more engaging and working with students and families to create practical solutions, we can help foster an environment that students not only need to be at school, but feel they want to be at school. So, thank you. Any questions?
Very, very well done, um, thank you all for, for this, um... I think we have some work to do because we want our students to be here and now that we've found out why the reasons are, I believe we can, we can get started with working on some of those. So, um, we really appreciate that, um, and thank you very much because we get an attendance report every month at our meeting and kind of like, why are the kids missing school? And you know, it's glad that it's you guys surveyed everybody to give us that information. So we really appreciate that. Thank you.
How many, how many, uh, answers were, or how was the survey constructed?
So the survey was conducted, uh, conducted in kind of like a list style. We were handed the, we handed them different responses they could answer to and they could just fill out the boxes to whichever applied to them. So some students could respond like to three answers or maybe four if possible. But altogether, uh, that's what the responses showed and mental health was shown to be the highest that most people are.
What do you think the board or school leadership, what message do you think we could give the parents to help this out?
That's really important. I would say, uh, I think it needs to be emphasized a lot more. It's very important to be here, it's important to be with your friends, to be in classes, to get educated, and, uh, to really learn all the stuff you need to learn to go out in life and be successful.
I also think if parents knew maybe of the description of some classes, they would make their kids more interested in those classes. So like maybe, I don't know, attaching a description or adding more hands-on, um, classes, they would be more engaged with them, have more fun.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Put you next, Tom.
Whatever time you give us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're up on to our financial report. I hate to follow that.
Yep.
Okay. So for our February financial reports, hold it up a little bigger to see. Okay, first we have all funds revenue. We have an overview that gives us our year-to-date information. So that we have up through February of twenty twenty-five now and we can compare that revenue by source also to the two prior years. So revenues tracking to come in a little higher than the prior years, which is great. Federal revenue, however, looks like it's coming in lower. Federal revenue doesn't always come in at the same time. Um, and we're seeing some pause in some of that potentially. So we'll be keeping an eye on that. Federal revenue is the smallest portion of our total revenue. Our largest portion of revenue source comes from local revenue. And then you also have the numbers to look at, so it's visually represented as well as visual numbers. You can see what our prior year-to-date amount was compared to our current year-to-date, what we budgeted or predicted that we would collect in revenue, and the percent of the total budget that we've met up to this point. And these are broken down by object codes. Same report, same visual representation for those expenses that the district incurs up through February for this school year's budget. Um, we break that out also by the objects. We have salary and benefits, purchase services, and supplies and materials. So we are over halfway through our budget, so we're watching to make sure that our expenditures are exceeding over the fifty percent range at this point. Also looking at those prior years to see where we were the year prior and the year before that on this same date those years ago when it comes in to expenditures. We've made a real concerted effort to try to reduce our spending this year in this current budget to reduce our purchase services and our supplies and materials and you're starting to see that come to fruition in that visual representation there. Salaries and benefits, we actually did not predict to see a reduction in expenditures there because we gave our teachers and staff raises and we want to continue to be able to do that. So that's one visual representation that represents an actual increase in expenditures. The next portion of that is the actual numbers again. Just like the other one is set up, the salaries, the benefits, and all other expenditures broke down into the number sets so we can really watch closely some of those percents. This is the time of year when we're gonna come through, uh, really sit down and try to predict where we are with revenues. Did we estimate? We always typically estimate revenues to come in very conservative, just in case. But after we've got about to, when we start getting February, April, if they're looking pretty steady and strong and it looks like we under-budgeted revenues, we'll come back to the board and ask the board to amend those revenue budgets so that our reports visually represent a little better. And the same with expenditures, if we're a little heavy on one side, we're gonna pay really close attention to that. Maybe something unexpected come up in the budget. We had to, um, we experienced a cost that we hadn't predicted. So our expenditures may be high in a certain area, uh, or they may be under in a certain area. They're really way under. That means we're gonna end to the good and have a little carryover into next year's budget. Sometimes instead of carrying that over into next year's budget, we'll go ahead and purchase out what we can ahead so that we start fresh again in July. So this is just the, uh, year-to-date financial report from everything from February back to the beginning of the budget year. Anybody have any questions? Moving on to our attendance report. How are we tracking?
Thank you, student council. That was very informative, all the minutes. And it's ironic, I've started moving attendance reports and I'm glad I did this last Thursday from what I hear. Seniors, alright. So primary center, uh, starting out, uh, K is listed at the bottom, kindergarten. Uh, but overall, our primary center, we had ninety-five point three one nine four. And our first graders have the best attendance in this period, reporting period here. Uh, next up, we have the elementary. And we had, as you can see on Mark, the grade level that had the best attendance there and that was third grade, overall tracking at ninety-five point four nine. And then we had the middle school, and our seventh graders, uh, were tracking at the highest there, like just a little bit, ninety-five point oh eight. And then we're moving on to the high school and, sorry, freshmen, we have freshmen now? But our freshmen, in, in our past reports, uh, we're glad that our freshmen's have the highest attendance in this reporting period here. Uh, ninety-two point five seven. And then we have the career center, last one there. And overall, our juniors were at the highest there, ninety-two point eight one percent. So that is this month's attendance report.
Mr. Hayden, I just had a question, just about the format. So, on the example you have there, you see the attendance status percentage, point six oh nine two.
Yeah, that's something we're still trying to figure out. We used to give the ninety ninety report. As a matter of fact, I think we had a group that talked with, happened at campus today about how we can figure out what the ninety ninety percent is. So I, as, we think that's an inaccurate number, but yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Looks like our attendance continues to improve, so that's good.
And next month, we have our assistant principals. I think quite a few of those are in attendance here. They've been working really hard, they met yesterday, uh, but then working really hard along with the, uh, principals as well on attendance, they will be presenting to the board on how that's looking in each of their buildings next month, so.
Moving on to our class size report.
And I, they, they talked about, the student council talked about homework. I think I might have failed my homework assignment because I, uh, I did K through five and I did not get that loaded or downloaded or went there. Uh, but this is the last six years on our class sizes. And these were pulled from our data that we have on five. Thank you. So I have a couple of elementary principals in the building. And make sure I get the correct year. We trans, transitioned in two thousand nineteen to, from K through five, correct? So we went to, uh, K first and second, and then third, fourth, and fifth. So I ran the first year that we moved to that where we had both a primary center and then also the elementary. And so what you're looking at there is each year, I try to simplify that on the total number of students, the number of teachers, and the average class size. So once again, I apologize that I did not get this to you at the time, so.
And the reason we always like to kind of take a peek at this, um, the board years ago approved a target, um, because in some of our buildings, we kind of, yeah, it's down there. Kind of felt like we were busting at the seams, um, with class sizes and we wanted to make sure that we had a target so that every, the district knew kind of where our target was and then also the, the DESI recommendations and then the DESI maximum, maximum students in a classroom. So, um, we just kind of like to take a peek at this every year to make sure we're not, need to adjust some class sizes and we've got enough, um, teachers for that number of students. So it looks really good. Couple areas.
So the bottom right corner, uh, area there is the board approved. And I think that was probably about, almost ten years ago maybe?
Yeah.
And so those new recommendations that are there in the right corner, that's part of our M six. That's the recommended, also the maximum number that they have. So if you look at this year's, I'll just start with kindergarten. Uh, that's right at the target. First grade would be above, second grade would be right at it. Third grade is above, fourth grade is on below. Fifth grade, show us there what fifth grade is at, one less teacher. And also first grade has one less teacher.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes, sir.
On twenty-four, twenty-five school year, uh, I see in each building you have twenty teachers. Is that your target? Do you have any positions open? And are you, are you targeting for twenty currently?
Uh, we're gonna have a recommendation a little bit later this evening to the primary center. That one is a little bit, uh, average class size, it's a little bit bigger.
So you may have positions open for both buildings or just one?
Uh, right now, we just have one.
Any other questions or discussions? Thank you for that. We will move on to the board newsletter. Any chance to kind of take a look at that? Sorry. I do want to bring up that this Friday, um, we're having a professional development day. So, um, and it's cafeteria style, so if any of the board members would like to come over on Friday to kind of take in some of those sessions, um... A lot of those sessions are led by our staff here, um, at the school district, so, um... And there is like an array of sessions, um, that are available to, um, get some very valuable information about. I think Jane sent out, uh, a letter on that, so if anybody has time on Friday. Anybody have any questions about the board newsletter or any discussion we need? Well, we'll move on to our MSBA board report.
Welcome to the March edition of the Missouri School Boards Association Report. We begin this month with a focus on school finance. With the very real concerns of a government shutdown in March and uncertainty in general with federal funding, there are a few specific actions districts should be taking to create federal dollars. MSBA Senior Director of School Finance Linda Quinley explains.
Hello, welcome to this month's board report. And this time, we're gonna talk a little bit about finance with you, very specifically focusing on what's happening at the federal level and the state level relating to some of our primary grants and funding. So just a key piece of information for you to know is that the recent halt or slowdown for possibilities of those, um, our federal grant dollars was not about our entitlement grants, like Title I and special education. Those were really more about discretionary grants. And so while we were not concerned about losing those main dollar sources for us, we were concerned about loss of discretionary. The good news is that those have been lifted right now and all money is flowing. But we want to talk just for a second about how to help your leaders with the feeling that you're getting all of those revenues and what do you do need to be watching. Our greater concern at this point in time is a possible slowdown or shutdown of the federal government, which would then slow down or delay significantly your federal program dollars. Help make sure that you are timely and consistently claiming those federal dollars so that if there's a slowdown or a shutdown, you don't incur any kind of a cash flow delay. The end goal is to have those federal dollars in your pocket as quickly as you can after you spend them so that if something happens at the federal level and there is a slowdown or a shutdown, you've got your cash instead of the fans having your cash. Keep in mind that as you go into next budget cycle, there are allocations will continue to come. The leadership in your district will be watching for those allocations and planning to fully use those allocations. Our recommendation is gonna be to continue next year like we're asking you to end this year. And just be really intentional about getting those federal dollars spent strategically and claimed quickly.
The best practice is to claim your federal program dollars at least quarterly if not monthly, keeping the funds coming in soon after they are spent by the district. Make sure the district spends federal dollars first, saving state and local dollars to use as needed. Contact Linda Quinley for finance questions and watch the weekly and the MSBA website for updates and information about upcoming financial webinars. MSBA's spring virtual meeting was held recently and it featured Dr. Phil Gork, a former Seattle area school board member. Dr. Gork is also a nationally recognized researcher, author, and speaker on school governance. The title of Dr. Gork's presentation was "Building a Culture of Trust." Dr. Gork said that building trust and the work of school boards is critical. School boards do matter when it comes to public education. In fact, we may matter now as much or more than ever. We are one of those last bastions of local We are one of those last bastions of local control, local governance. And we are the entity that ensures we're creating a more democratizing student population and young adults to take our place in years to come. Trust is just as important or more important than it's ever been before when it comes to this one. In school board development, we often tell board members that they are stewards of the public's two most precious resources, their children and their. And last, but certainly not least, it's March, which means it's School Board Recognition Month. All of us at MSBA sincerely want to thank each and every one of you for all that you do. Your hard work and dedication to your schools and communities are appreciated and your commitment to all students does not go unnoticed. Visit the MSBA website for materials to help celebrate. So with that, thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting and we'll see you in April for the next MSBA board report.
I'd like to thank Garrett, our safety officer, resource officer. Tonight, our board greet and meet was here at the high school and.
I'm a big Boston Red Sox fan.
And, um, we, uh, was recognizing our school safety officer. So thank you for being here and going over some of our school safety with our patrons that came. Thank you. Uh, next month, I believe we're going to be at the transportation building. So that's your opportunity to be, uh, meet with your board members from six until about six forty-five before the board meeting, if anybody has anything to bend our ear about. I do have a topic, if it's okay with the board, for our students for next time. Test. How do we get our test scores up? How do you, you think that's a good topic for you? Think you can tackle that one?
We'll look into it.
All right.
Does anyone have a pen so I can write it down? Thank you, Mr. Garrett. How do we get our test scores up?
Is that okay with everybody?
Absolutely. Well. Test and protect. I don't know what test you're referring to.
Our state test. State test scores. E O Cs. E O Cs.
All right, that's it.
E O Cs. Okay. Thank you all. Um, all right, I just need one more motion, please.
To adjourn. She doesn't realize what you're volunteering.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. We adjourned open session.